Okay, okay, we'll move forward. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Members of the Council. As a result of the closed session just concluded, no action was taken required to be reported.
Thank you, Carl. This evening's invocation will be given by Councilmember McLean.
Yes, thank you very much. I wanted to take this occasion to talk about an organization in our community that needs some help. And it is the SCV Food Pantry. And I'm really happy to be able to announce that we are going to be having a food drive here at City Hall. And it's going to be held from August 4th through the 29th. It's going to be called our Summer Food Drive. And all non-perishable food donations will be given to the SCV Food Pantry, which provides supplemental food to more than 3,600 of our neighbors in need, half of whom are children. And during the first half of this year, the Food Pantry has seen a 53% increase in the number of individuals receiving services over the last year. Some of the most needed items for donation include peanut butter, macaroni and cheese, canned meat, beans, fruits, vegetables, soups, cereal, and pasta. So, please, I invite you to bring your donations to City Hall, the sports complex, or our transit maintenance facility during August. And for more information on this, please visit our website at www.santa-clarida.com. And with your indulgence, Council, I would like to ask Belinda Crawford, who is here, just to stand. And I'm also going to ask that perhaps we pass the hat. Did you bring something to ...
[inaudible]
Oh, fantastic, okay. And hopefully you all don't mind, I've done this before in the past, and it's worked out pretty well. Just if you feel like you'd like to give something, please do. If you don't have anything with you right now, this food drive will be going on from August 4th through the 29th. You can donate food, or you can donate cash. And I doubt if anybody brought any food with you tonight. But please pass a bag around up here as well. And thank you all very much.
Thank you, Marcia.
And at this time, we are called to order. We'll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Ender?
Here.
Councilmember West?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferry?
Here.
Councilmember McLean?
Here.
Mayor Keller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia?
You bet. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, under words and recognitions this evening, I believe we'll have Mayor Pro Tim Ferry give the first one to Deputy Ferrone.
This program we're about to honor, VITA, we're fortunate to have the VITA Deputy of the Year here in Santa Clarita. Deputy Timothy Ferrone was named this year the Vital Intervention and Directional Alternatives Deputy of the Year. VITA is designed to redirect Santa Clarita at-risk youth in a positive direction through counseling, community service, physical training, and team-building exercises. Deputy Ferrone has demonstrated astounding dedication to redirecting the negative behaviors of youth in his program, and is responsible for teaching them personal accountability. I know on a personal level, I've been able to work with Deputy Ferrone, the VITA program absolutely is, for many parents, our last ditch effort at at-risk students before they go into the juvenile system or go into the legal system. These are students that the schools have made attempts, generally the parents, a lot of times, single parents, have made attempts to correct behaviors, and we just don't have the tools necessary. And Deputy Ferrone, I mean, it really is almost, I want to call it a military boot camp, but these guys are out running with military drill sergeants on the weekends, they have academic counselors. I think the best part of it is the counseling part, where the student, as well as the parents, do counseling, family counseling. But I know Deputy Ferrone takes a personal interest with these kids, not only while they're in the program, but really, his success is, once the kids have successfully completed the program, I know he continues on and makes sure that they have jobs in the community, that they're doing well in school. And it's that personal commitment that he gives why we know he's being recognized as Deputy of the Year for VITA. So, on behalf of the entire Council, Deputy Ferrone, if you'd like to come up, we'd like to honor you. Thank you very much. [applause] Wife, kids, come on up. This is one time you get a photo with the mayor and your dad. We'll tell your dad to step out if you want, we'll just get with the mayor. Oh, baby Ferrone, we're in Valencia football. Very proud of your dad, he does an amazing job. Councilmember Ender has a son-up plays football with little baby Ferrone here, so.
Actually, I'm actually glad you gave me the opportunity to speak. Without the collaboration of the City of Santa Clarita, my job would pretty much be impossible. A few years ago, actually two and a half years ago, the County of Los Angeles had zero VITA locations. The City of Santa Clarita stepped up and talked to our powers that be and asked if we could re-implement the VITA program. Without their funding and their support, there is absolutely no way, and I'm being semi-bias because I run the program, the best VITA program in the County of Los Angeles. The collaborative effort and my volunteer staff make this VITA program successful, and I'd just like to, once again, thank the City of Santa Clarita. And without them, it wouldn't be possible.
and that is the College of the Canyons golf teams. Today's City Council is pleased to honor the men's and women's golf teams from College of the Canyons for their recent victories in the 2008 state championship. The men's team powered through the second round of the 2008 California Community College State Championships with a tournament low of 361 for a seven-over-par, I hope you're listening carefully to this, City Manager Post Camp, there are some real golf scores here, for a seven-over-par 727 on the 36-hole score that captured the state title. The College of the Canyons women's golf team carded a two-days total and state championship record of 35-over-par 619, that's 315 to 304, to win the California Community Colleges Women's Golf State Championship by 14 strokes on the par 73. In addition to congratulating the College of the Canyons men and women golfers for their recent victory, I would also like to recognize that this is the second time in the school's history that head coach Gary Peterson has led both golf teams to state titles in the same academic year. Now, we'd like to invite the College of the Canyons coach, Gary Peterson, to come forward, and I understand you're going to receive the certificates for the team. Gary? Before we have our picture taken, I would like to read the names of the students that were so successful in their golf. Obviously, we have Gary Peterson, our coach, Gary, the certificate. We have Tessa Harp, Darlene Bognot, Elena Tan, Ashley Windsor, Ashley Redman, Ginny Lee, Davis Kirkland, Ryan Perez, Justin Renaud, Lucas Allensworth, Casey Piper, and our final students, Andrew Ock. We're very proud of these young people. They certainly have significantly achieved a milestone in their educational history and certainly their golf. Gary, perhaps a couple of words from you?
Sure. Real quickly, I'd like to thank the City Council, and it seems that a college golf coach has less influence over his players two months postseason than maybe a high school coach might. I want to thank specifically Valencia Country Club, Robinson Ranch, and TPC Valencia. They have been very, very supportive of the college golf team, and I know as well as the high school golf programs. And for one of the first times in a long time, this was pretty much an exclusively Santa Clarita Valley team, both on the men's and women's side, with the exception of one golfer on the women's side and two golfers on the men's side. Everybody was homegrown. So, thank you again for this opportunity.
Coach, thank you, and let's get a picture. Okay, we have one more presentation to make, and I'm going to ask Lori Ender to do that one, if you will, Lori.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm very happy to. I always love seeing purple in the room, it looks good. Today, the City Council is pleased to honor the 2008 Valencia High School Vikings softball team, who are the Division I Southern Section Champions. They managed a 3-0 win against Semex Valley with a double play ending the game. This is the second consecutive year that Valencia Vikings' female varsity softball team, the Lady Vikings, have won this honor. I'm going to read off your names, and I can't believe that everybody's going to be here. I think some of the girls are probably on travel teams out around the country playing softball. But I'd like to read off your names and then ask you all to come up. Lindsay Clark, Kendra Feldman, Brittany Yakawa, Amy Moore, Kaitlyn Rooney, Alyssa Garza, Randall Moreland, Annie Dreher, Jessica Spigner, Bethany Kemp, Madison Shipman, Megan Fogelsong, Leilani Bernardino, Paige Smith, Lauren Bozer, Shannon Fitzgerald, and coaches Donna Lee and Carrie Mitchell. Congratulations to the Lady Vikings once again.
All right, shorter ones have to be front.
[inaudible]
NCAA champion?
The catcher could go in the middle.
I can't.
Want to come closer, go for it, if you want to come up.
Thank you.
Great job, Carl, thank you.
I believe that's two Valencia teams in a row.
Yeah, and I like that they're...
Well, I'm going to brag about Coach Lee before she leaves, this is what, back-to-back or back-to-back CIF championships? And I wholeheartedly mean, she probably is the best coach, boys' and girls' coaches in the Santa Clarita Valley. You will not find a more dedicated coach, hard-working, 12 months a year. Her husband back here, Greg Lee, works at Hart District, does an amazing job. Actually saw him on television the other day, where there was a show on, I think it was Showtime, about freshman rookie class, but Greg Lee does a great job. But Donna, sincerely, you probably are the elite coach in this valley. Mike Carrington will send me a letter tomorrow, but I still think you have it over Mike, so.
You know, one thing, one thing you've got to admit, our schools do exceedingly well in our athletics program throughout this city, year after year. We really have much to be proud of in that regard. Ladies and gentlemen, our next item is public safety and topic of the month, and we will call on our Chief Captain LaBerge. Our captain, we have somebody else that's going to be presenting this evening?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, today I'd like to introduce Sergeant Jim Anderson, and he'll be giving a presentation on identity theft for this week. So, Sergeant Jim Anderson.
Thank you, Captain.
Good evening, Sergeant.
Good evening, Mayor Keller and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to share and discuss identity theft and senior awareness. As you may know, the Santa Clarita Valley Sheriff's Station has developed a program to educate the public and make them more aware of the threats, and to reduce the likelihood of becoming a victim of identity theft. Our program is entitled the Fight Program: Fraud and Identity Theft Education. The Fight Program was recognized by the California Crime Prevention Officers Association as the California Crime Prevention Officer Program of the Year. We have shared this program with all of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Stations, and in September, we'll be teaching at the Crime Prevention Officers Convention in Sacramento. Our program addresses three areas of concern. It's divided into general public, senior education, and business awareness. The program uses public speaking opportunities throughout the community, as well as the media, newspaper articles, TV and radio appearances, and radio spots. We believe by educating the public on what the thieves are trying to steal, the public is then less likely to become a victim. The thieves are out to get your identity, your name, your date of birth, driver's license, social security numbers, credit card, or check information. With this information, the thief can become you. What are they trying to get, or where are they trying to get this information, is that normally, they get it from the public, from you, the victim. They get it from your trash or from the mail. We are recommending that you shred all your documents and your junk mail. The sheriff's station in the city has a Safe Shred Day on July 26, 2008. Please join us at the station and shred your documents. From your mail, we don't recommend that you put outgoing mail in your mailboxes. A suspect's looking for the mail, flag to be up, so that they can steal your outgoing mail. Be aware of your accounts, monitor your check register, and your statements weekly if you can. Don't give out your personal information over the phone or by email. Banks and credit card companies will not ask for your PIN number or account information. And seniors are specifically targeted, and sometimes they fall easy to scams. If you're approached and asked to give money to someone, check them out first. If they need money immediately, tell them no. If they get pushy or are demanding, tell them no. If it's too good to be true, it is. Feel free to call the sheriff's station, run by any potential scam to us, and we'll be happy to assist you. If you've become the victim of identity theft or fraud, collect your receipts, try to get the originals, get computer information, and make a report with us. Notify the credit bureaus and the Federal Trade Commission at ftc.gov. And for additional information, you check our website at scvsheriff.com, or the city's website at santa-clarida.com. To schedule a presentation for your group, or contact our Community Relations Office at 255-1121, and we'll be happy to come out and give you a presentation. I've left some flyers on the back table with some identity theft tips, and a flyer with our Safe Shred Day. If you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Sergeant Anderson, if I may ask you, from my past in law enforcement, I recall that, in all truthfulness, along with the fire department, law enforcement and fire department have been used extensively for scams, for raising money, for bogus purposes, and just lining people's pockets. I haven't seen as much of that, or observed as much of it, in recent years. I assume it's still out there, but I've always encouraged people, if you have any question, particularly if it's phone solicitation-type activity, and they come and pick up the money right away, if you'll permit them to do so, but call the station to verify that it's...
Absolutely, sir. We will know whether it's a legitimate fundraising operation. Usually, those type of operations will call us out front and give us heads up, so we know and we can check on them. So, call us first.
Excellent. Any questions for Sergeant Anderson? Sergeant, thank you very much for taking time and giving us your report. Appreciate it very much. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we'll move into the public participation portion of our evening. And we do appear to have about six or seven speakers. Our first speaker will be Sandra Cattell, followed by Tony Natoli, followed by Diane Adler. Sandra?
Good evening, Mayor Keller, City Council, staff, and audience. My name is Sandra Cattell, I live in New Hall, and I am representing the Sierra Club. Although we are known locally for our terrific hikes, the Sierra Club is America's oldest, largest, and most influential grassroots environmental organization, with over 1.3 million members and supporters. Since its founding in 1892, the Sierra Club has been instrumental in protecting wildlife and wild places, as well as the implementation of important legislation, which has improved our quality of life. The local Santa Clarita group of the Sierra Club signed on to the fight against SEMEX almost from the fight's inception. Our community did not want the largest sand and gravel mine adjacent to homes and schools on one side, and the Pacific Crest Trail on the other, not to mention the traffic nightmare of moving 56 million tons of the product by truck. We appreciate the efforts of the City of Santa Clarita, the City of Victorville, SEMEX, Congressman McKeon's office, and the office of the Secretary of the Interior in crafting a solution to the problem. Tonight, I'm pleased to inform you, the Sierra Club has formally endorsed HR 5887, the Soladet Canyon Mining Act. We are ready to work with all interested parties for the passage and implementation of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra, and I want you to know, we appreciate you and many others in the community that have worked so hard to assist in supporting this very important bill for our community. Thank you very much. Tony?
Thank you, Tony Natoli, Ben's Road. I'm here responding to comments made two weeks ago. I have my three minutes again. First of all, I'd like to say that I believe the words of this council, and the things that you do, and the city does, and I raise a flag for this city any time. But when it comes to Ben's Road, I'm finding that the bottom line is that the traffic gets worse every day, and to the tune of thousands over the last five years. It raises questions and doubts, and I believe rightfully so. People apparently are working hard, but probably not working hard on the right things. Specifically, I want to discuss surveys and community meetings. I'm just wondering when surveys became the kind of official vote, or the primary method of determining what actions this city should take. I don't see surveys being taken for other issues in the city, or any of the consent agenda items. It's understood that initial survey for Ben's Road was primarily for the purpose to determine which restrictions Ben's Road residents would prefer. Back in 2005, and this is the meat of it, 209 homes were surveyed. Most of the 28 Ben's Road residents objected to that number initially. Just what chance did 28 homeowners have against 209 surveyed? Well, surprisingly, just over 100 surveys were returned, 60-some-odd people favored the restrictions, giving a 58% win to implementing restrictions on Ben's Road. Almost a year ago, we exceeded 2,000 trips a day, and did staff implement step two? No. Were there other possibly better methods thought up? Yes. And what did staff finally do? They took another survey. I objected to this, as well did most of my neighbors. They need to take action and implement step number two. Secondly, where did staff get the idea that they should now expand the survey to 538 homes? I objected this privately with staff, and publicly last year, and again this last March. Why not expand the survey to 185,000 residents? Doesn't this sound like the staff is diluting the results? Does this sound fair? For what purpose was it expanded? Certainly not to better reflect the primary purpose. Would something like this lead people to question the integrity of both the staff and the City Council? And the results of the 538 sent out, a bit over 200 were returned, and it appears we still have 60 or so people saying we need to close Ben, and that's 31%. I'm really rather surprised we have that. I think the city needs to do the right thing for its citizens that are negatively impacted, and protect the rights of their peace and quiet and their pursuit of happiness in their own home and neighborhoods, just like those residents who live on Placerita, Maple Valley, Cal Grove, and Rainbow Glen. Stop the meaningless surveys, and future community meetings, do what's right, do the proper thing that we know we should be doing for Ben's Road, and close it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Our next speaker will be Diane Adler, followed by Alan Cameron, followed by Bruce McFarland. Diane?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak about a serious issue that we had in our neighborhood, specifically the 4th of July. I've been a resident of Sand Canyon for 25 years. We built our house ourselves, my husband specifically with his own hands. On the 4th of July, on Friday night, we had some neighbors that unfortunately began to launch aerial fireworks, the type that you see at Magic Mountain, not like sparkler-type fireworks, but the kind that are being launched hundreds of feet into the air, imploding, exploding over other people's property, livestock, homes, humans. I can't tell you how enormous and loud and frightening this was. My neighbor's horses were running through our fence, there were dogs everywhere, my own dogs had to be tranquilized. And my concern was that, we did call 911 and had a two-hour lag time for response. The Sheriff Department was very awesome, tried hard to get somebody out there, but I was also told by them that there was a delay due to the fact that there was so much activity going on on the 4th of July. So, I'm basically here to see if there's anything that we could do to implement a quicker response, something so that we're not in fear in a canyon that was just on fire in two different locations last week. And if we could just get some type of response, quicker response, more stringent bans, penalties, whatever it takes, so that we're just not living in fear in that canyon. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question, Diane?
Sure.
I think you're off, is it Running Horse?
Road Runner.
Road Runner? Road Runner.
Correct.
Excuse me. Is this the same property where there has been discharge of fireworks in recent months? Did this come from that same property? You've got a neighbor not far from you that-
That I do not know about. I, I don't know about the prior fireworks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alan Cameron.
Thank you very much Mayor Keller. Of our 6 billion fellow human beings on this planet, it would be hard to imagine very many of them who would not admit to being moved by and appreciative of music. Almost everyone has a higher or lower appreciation for what music does for them. On this planet, there are perhaps 30 cities that are fortunate enough to have sufficient numbers of skilled musicians to where they can have assemblies of performance art for musicians that are at the absolute pinnacle of technical and artistic achievement. And of those 30 cities worldwide, it is legitimate to say that the Southern California area is certainly in the top five, and arguably number one because of the dominance of the entertainment industry in the recording arts, television, movies, commercial, and live performances. And the Los Angeles Philharmonic Orchestra certainly is, is always regarded as being among the top 10. The reason I mention this in passing is that Santa Clarita has yet ascended, in terms of the consciousness of the public, into that very rare, very limited number of communities that have the very finest performing music available to them anywhere on the planet Earth. This past Saturday, the very first of the city's justifiably renowned concerts in the park took place, and the introductory concert was performed by none other than the Santa Clarita Symphony Orchestra. Now, a lot of communities in the country have symphony orchestras. Santa Clarita is, is unique in that the players in that orchestra are drawn exclusively from the very finest professional musicians anywhere in the world. Many of the musicians that play in that orchestra have other gigs available to them, secondary employment opportunities such as playing for the Los Angeles Philharmonic Orchestra. Many of the members of this orchestra, though they are top professional musicians, reside in the Santa Clarita Valley, though membership in the orchestra is adjudicated on the basis of professional competency, not residency. It is only by the luck of the draw that because Santa Clarita is the desirable community that it is, that these musicians choose, to a fairly significant degree, to reside here. The concert was beyond description. For the 2,500 people who witnessed the concert, and rose to their feet at the end of it in a rounding, resounding standing ovation for the group, their enjoyment is beyond description. The orchestra has two more concerts in its season, one in November and one in January. The one in January, 75 musicians strong, will be to accompany the legendary Art Garfunkel at the Santa Clarita Community Arts Performing Center. And in conclusion, I would say that everyone in Santa Clarita would love to hear the work of this extraordinary orchestra. It is world-class. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Alan. Bruce McFarland, and Bruce will be followed by Cam Noltmeyer.
Hi Bruce McFarland, and I'm going to have a slightly different note, and I'm wearing purple too, but I am a heart grad, so I'm conflicted obviously. I, I came to speak man to man with our mayor, Bob Keller, and I need to do that here because I can't, well, let me say, Mayor Keller has declined my invitation to meet and talk about issues. So, I'd like to bring him up here. And what I want to talk about is House Resolution 5887. And I'm not sure why Congressman McKeon took as long as he did to submit the bill. It's the, the CEMEX bill, the Soladad Mining Act bill. It's a great bill, everybody's supporting it. It didn't get entered into the record until after the city council election. We are on a very short timeframe for getting that passed. Legislators will be going away for summer break in August. After that, who knows if there'll be an opportunity to do that, to get it passed. As of two months ago, there were no Democrat or Republican cosigners for that bill. I, I don't believe there were any environmental organizations that had endorsed it either as of that time. I'm not 100% sure as that. Alan Cameron and myself went out and tried to get Democratic support, and we got a number of organizations to sponsor resolutions, and since that time Congressman Brad Sherman has signed on. This is not enough. We need to do a lot more to push this bill through. I've tried to talk to Congressman McKeon's office, I can't get a call back. I don't know exactly what he needs from us. I'm, I'm concerned that what is on the city's website says to send letters to Congressman McKeon. I think Congressman McKeon knows that the people in Santa Clarita want this bill passed. Alan had an idea the other day that we need to reach out to people across the United States and get them to contact congressmen that they know in both parties so that we can garner more support. I would like still to set aside our political differences and see if there's some way we can work on getting this bill passed. It's, it, it will be your legacy, and it will be a great accomplishment if you can get it passed, and I'm with you to try and get that passed. So, thank you.
Thank you Mr. McFarland. Our next speaker, and our final one, is Cam Noltmeyer.
Cam Noltmeyer, speaking for myself, resident of Santa Clarita. I've been out of town for a number of weeks, so I have missed some of your meetings, but I wanted to respond to a statement that was made by Councilman Ferry with regard to planning, and what's going on with the out-of-control growth in our community. And the excuse that always comes out is, well, that's the county. That's the county doing it. But we formed a city so we'd have a stay. And actually, I've been down to the county appealing some of their questionable decisions, and there is no comments from the city. Actually, you're working now for a general plan for both the county and the city. But what, what I'm seeing is that we at least have three, maybe four, because the Committee for Integrity in Government that had the very large contributions in the election for you, Mr. Ferry, and for McLean and West, were from the building industry, and from, I believe, I don't have it right in front of me, I've been running from one meeting to another today, Plum Canyon LLC, I believe. One thing where I hear a lot of complaints about Plum Canyon, and my concern is that you're saying, well, there's nothing we can do. Then why do you even have a city if there's nothing you can do? Not that your planning department is any better in what we're seeing approved, and we're going to be committed to a lot of these entitlements that we're seeing coming through for many, many, many years to come. And people are going to be shocked. And the problem you, you don't seem to ever say is that this community has a member on the county planning commission from this community. Mr. Keller, Mayor Keller, I believe you were on there at one time. I believe George Pedersen was on there. Right now, it's Pat Maduno that is on that commission. They are the ones that have approved the very thing you're complaining about, people from our own city. So why aren't we contacting Supervisor Antonovich and telling him that our representatives really aren't representing us if you want to sit here and complain about the county?
Thank you Ms. Noltmeyer. City Manager?
Yes, thank you very much Mayor. Members of the city council, a few comments with regard to Ben's. The direction of the city council was that staff will be in the Ben's neighborhood conducting a public meeting during the first part of August, and that is what we intend to do. With regard to the fireworks, I happened to see Ms. Adler talk to the police chief, who got the necessary information from her. With regard to HR 5887, we certainly appreciate everybody who is in the support of that effort. Congressman McKeon has been doing a yeoman's job of working this bill through a very convoluted process. He is the initial sponsor of the bill, and we have been working very closely with the congressman and his office, and are taking his lead on how best to work this bill through the process. Certainly are open to anybody's suggestions, but we really feel it's appropriate, and in the city's best interest, and in the bill's best interest, to be working, as I say, very, very much in concert with the congressman. With regard to planning in the unincorporated area, I personally have never heard any council members say, there's nothing we can do about development in the unincorporated area. The city council certainly doesn't control it, but the council does have some degree of influence over it. Individual council members have met on many occasions with Supervisor Antonovich. We have met with our representative on the regional planning commissioner, regional planning commission over the years. We've been working very well with the staff of the planning division, and I think over the last year or two have made great progress in having influence over those projects. We probably don't always see eye to eye, but I think with the One Valley, One Vision process that we have been going through, that gap continues to narrow, and we're still hopeful that at some point in the relatively near future, that the standards for development in the city and county mirror one another. That concludes my comments Mayor.
Thank you City Manager. Just a quick one, and then I think Lorraine you wanted to make comment as well. I, I just want to, just for clarity, Ms. Noltmeyer, I think if I heard you correctly, you talked about my being on the planning commission, and you were right, but I just wanted to kind of clear it up. I wasn't on the county planning commission, it was on the city's planning commission. As a, as we talk about the, the bill for the CEMEX matter, I just wanted to make a general comment, and I appreciate the people coming forward and anxious to give support. I will tell you, we are only at this juncture because of the overwhelming partnership and teamwork by this city, various organizations, everybody coming together and working. And you've heard me speak in the past, as the city manager has, and others, we're very optimistic. I'm, I'm excited for what, hopefully we can, we can be victorious with this bill. If somebody's got ideas, I certainly know Alan Cameron knows this, perhaps you do as well, Mr. McFarland, I kind of feel that Mike Murphy, our Intergovernmental Relations Director, is the best contact person. That way we keep a cohesive, everybody knows what the left hand and the right hand's doing and working in concert with one another. And if you've got ideas, please pass them by him, and we will continue to give you updates as this thing continues to move forward, and in this one day, hope that we really have a celebration here in Santa Clarita and celebrate a victory. Lorraine?
I'd like to personally thank Sandra Catell. Very, very good job Sandra, I know you've been hard at it, and Alan Cameron, Bruce McFarland, thank you. You've done a yeoman's job in getting a couple of great endorsements. The job isn't done, there's a lot of work to do. There's a lot of work that has to happen very quickly. Certainly, when this is won, it is the community's victory and legacy. It belongs to no one person. It has been nine years for me, I think it's been eight years for Bob. It has been hard work for the staff. It has been brutal for some of the community members who have stayed and gone through thousands of hours of meetings, and I mean, it has just been such a team effort throughout the community. We have a lot to do this summer. I know Bob and I will be going back to DC probably through the summer hiatus. I think Mike Murphy will be back in a few days or a week, Monday, and I invite anyone who is working on getting some support for HR 5887, contact Mike. We need all the help we can get. It is definitely to Santa Clarita's best interest while everybody is supporting the bill, and it has been very bipartisan, very overwhelming. Good news from different people, having Victorville and CEMEX both supporting has been great. While the energy and the synergies there, we'll take all the help we can get, and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts because it's been a long battle, and we want to bring this to conclusion for the future of our community. So, thank you all.
Thank you Lorraine.
Here in the Santa Clarita Valley, we get so little rain, but we have three easy ways to save water each month of the summer. One, make sure your sprinklers work, and don't aim at the sidewalk. You'll save 500 gallons. Two, don't forget this 25 cent washer to fix leaks and save 600 gallons. Three, plant things native to our valley and save 750 gallons. It's so easy, even I can do it, but you're the one who can save money and water for our future.